Good evening, everyone. It is now, well, there are a couple sentences here, so I'm sorry, seven o'clock. Um, it is now seventeen of July eighteen, twenty twenty-two. I hereby call this meeting the Board of Education of the Northern Illinois Public School Bishop's Order. This is the Pitiful Meeting of the Northern Illinois Public School Board of Education. It is a meeting in public, but is not a public meeting. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum section of the meeting a little later. All speakers should have already signed in and may be called to the committee at any time. If you are uncomfortable with speaking during an open forum, comments, questions may always be submitted to the Board and Administration via email to both. Mr. Curry? Would you follow up?
Mr. Curry, here. Mr. Lamar?
Here.
Mr. McKinnon?
Here.
Mr. Pidmore?
Here.
Mr. Vodasch?
Here.
I'll hold your presence.
Could you stand in front of the meetings?
I am the United States Senator of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, indivisible, infinite and endless.
All right, can I have a motion for the...
Oh, we're coming.
Second.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? We have no communications this morning.
That leads us into open forum. Um, open forum, although the public has the right to attend board meetings, it has to be verified to participate in the deliberations of the Board of Assembly Consent. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concerned them, but in public session, the board has the right to request complaints about school personnel or against any person connected with the school system, be directed to the appropriate institution. The time on the wall will provide each speaker for five minutes. And who can repeat our first presentation?
All right, so we have Ms. Karen Byers.
Ms. Karen Byers.
Good afternoon, evening. Uh, my name is Karen Byers. I'm Karen, President of the High School PTSA, founder of the research, um, Hermine House, CPA and local business owner. As the Administration and as the Board, you are constantly told what you should do and what you should not be doing. But most of those comments that are made to you are made in a vacuum or a bubble, or at one point in time, not taking into account the entire picture. Sometimes people have selective memory, so I thought I would just kind of go over a few of them that kind of know how to be like this. Um, comment number one, safety should be where we are thinking now and where we should put our money now. And you promised that safety enhancements before, but we didn't get them. So I thought in case people didn't remember, I would give a little bit of a history lesson. In the member of twenty eighteen, an operating levy was put on the ballot that called for safety enhancements. Ideas were quoted to try to add some type of extra layer of superiority on entrances to each of the buildings. I actually was talking with different principals about that. That levy in the member of twenty eighteen was defeated. In May of twenty nineteen, an operating levy was again put on the ballot, but this time it eliminated safety enhancements as the district was operating at a deficit. Knowing you were going to turn to the promise and instead details were given as to what would be eliminated if the levy failed again. The levy passed. Comment number two, inflation is high, taxes are high, and this is not the time for a bond issue. According to my daughter, these numbers are very heavy when we're trying to go through them with this, simple as possible. Over the last nine years, you may not know, but your taxes have been dramatically reduced. You asked for lower taxes. Federal taxes in twenty seventeen ranged from ten percent to thirty-nine point six. Ten percent, excuse me, ten percent on the first eighteen thousand six fifty and lower, and fifteen percent if you made seventy-five nine. Federal tax rates in twenty twenty-one ranged from ten to thirty-seven percent. Ten percent on the first nineteen nine, and only twelve percent up to eighty-one oh five oh, down by three percent. Ohio tax rates in twenty-ten ranged from point six one eight percent to six point two four percent. And if you made less than five thousand and fifty dollars, you paid no tax. But in twenty-twenty-one, they ranged from one point three eight percent to three point nine nine percent. But if you made less than twenty-five thousand dollars, you paid absolutely no tax whatsoever. Ohio has a small business deduction. It passed in twenty thirteen. If you own your own business, you pay zero percent in taxes on the first two hundred fifty thousand of income from that business. Amounts over two hundred five thousand, you pay three percent. So if you own your own business, you're a CPA or a lawyer, you pay zero in Ohio taxes. Federal qualified business banking deduction passed in twenty eighteen. Business owners can deduct twenty percent of their business income, thus shielding twenty percent from any tax. Said another way, twenty percent of a business owner's income taxed at zero percent for federal taxes. Ohio, oh, the state tax was eliminated in twenty thirteen. When this tax was collected, twenty percent went to the state, but eighty percent went to the city, the village, and the township for the person who died, lived when they died. So your federal taxes and your state income taxes have been dramatically reduced over the last forty-nine years. Comment three, I'm tired of putting taxes for things that I have uncovered and I have no control over. Because federal tax rates have gone down, the federal government gives less money at any to the states for their programs and projects. Because state taxes have gone down, states give less money to the cities, the villages, the townships, and the school districts. So the cities, villages, townships, and the school districts have to raise their own revenues. So they ask you to vote to fund specific projects by putting a levy or a bond issue on the ballot. So now instead of your tax dollars going to the federal government to filter down to the state, filter down to the city, the village, and township, or the school district, without your local, you can control where it goes and keep it right here in your community without anybody taking a little part of it. So to conclude, you have been wanting lower taxes, and you have been getting lower taxes for the past nine years, but most people don't see where they want to get taxed. You have wanted control over where your tax dollars go, and you are being asked to do just that. The money collected from this potential bond issue stays right here in our school district. It will build new state schools enhanced with the latest technology and safety for learning. You won't be retrofitting an old building to try to make it safe. You will be building new facilities with the latest security features state right into the design. Thank you.
Next person up is Mr. Fedalcy.
A good evening. Uh, thank you, Board, thank you, Joe Clark, thank you, attendees. It's so important to show your passion of excellence for this community. I want to talk about institutional improvements. Try see a hundred and ten million dollars of campus updates across the air. A Hoosier Medical Center, sixty-four thousand square feet, two hundred million dollar project. A two-story pavilion, thirty-six floor office town, multi-level parking garage, built by twenty twenty-four. Shore of Monies, headquarters, well, that's going to be a three hundred million dollar project. Some of the brightest minds in corporate America are making these decisions to build now. These are three. These are institutions with vision, fortitude, and a commitment to excellence in northeast Ohio. And many of our neighbors work for these institutions. Tonight, some will share concerns of inflation, bad timing, labor supply chains, but this is just a small piece of the conversation, and I'd like to tell you why. Bad timing is there or good time to spend a hundred and sixty-five million dollars? When I bought my new home, I was so proud, scared to death to spend that money. And it's much the way this community feels right now. Many of us are land and homeowners, but I'm supporting new schools because my community, my children require it. I bought my new house for my children and my family. I'm supporting new schools for the children's community, the community's children. Segway Hills, Macedonia Northfield, can lose in this battle. Those that are saying no, they're property owners, they're homeowners, uh, maybe they're kind of being taxed like Karen let into. See what happens if the values are missed of the past. See where people go, where they move to. It's a major concern. My kids might not ever see or attend one of these new schools, but a Greek proverb, wise men plant trees in blue shade they may never see, because it's what's best for the community and the kids afterward. Labor supply chains will ease. There's street lumber bag at Home Depot, baby formulas on the shelves, and gas prices are getting cheaper. The world stopped, give it time, it'll start soon. Let's get in line for our construction order for our children's sake. Inflation is the one that will be brought up by short-sighted people. Inflation is temporary. That's why those institutions I mentioned earlier, based on a ten-year rolling average, they have vision. Inflation is the smaller of our problems of the federal combat inflation and great hikes. I urge you to act swiftly, panels of the essence. Cleveland Fed President, San Francisco Fed President have already stated half and three-quarter percent raises possible. I can only speculate at what a percent cost this school district every time it goes up, but I did do the math. Lock down the bond now. Trust your vision that started this process and debate. Fortitude by this Board resonates to improve the schools below. And join the institutions that invest in our community and in our nation's commitment to excellence. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Devine, and I am one of the trustees of the historical society of the Northfield, which also means that we operate the Palmer House. And as the Board or the school system looks toward the future, I'd like to take you folks back over a hundred years, because I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but the school system owns the Palmer House, which sits on school property in Leece, from here. As you move forward, one of the things that concerns a lot of our members is what is the fate of the Palmer House? So we decided that maybe it would be a good idea for us to invite the board members, and Dr. Clark, to take a tour of the Palmer House at your convenience, so that you can understand the importance of this to the community, and more importantly, how much part it has played in the school system in this area. I'll be available after if you want to take a tour after the meeting. So anyway, thank you very much for considering my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devine.
Mr. Devine, I had an opportunity to tour the Palmer House, uh, maybe ten years ago. Fascinating facility and one that we intend keeping intact regardless of what happened with the facilities. Beautiful facility and one that should be kept alive for our kids to learn the history of this area. Thank you so much.
If I could just take one quick comment, one of the things that we, we had on display over there as we opened up the Palmer House, and we're all talking about schools, the importance of that, when it comes down to schools. You probably personally should live today because the very first superintendent lived in the Palmer House.
I believe I saw this film, "Strongly." Thank you, sir.
Mr. Devine, I'd be happy to sit with you afterwards if I had a whole point of time. I don't say anything.
Like what?
Yes. So we are up to our reports from the events and the work of these superintendent committees and other organizations. Um, and I'd love to offer first to Mr. Curry. Would you like to share that stat?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brown, Dr. Clark, Madam President. I only refer to you as Madam President because it sounds awkward to refer to you as President to kids. And board members. That's the last time you may hear me refer to you.
It's just cousins, but yeah.
On June ninth, a Career Center Adult Education School of Nursing, class of twenty twenty-two graduated after successfully completing the practical nursing program, making them eligible to take their state of Ohio Board of Nursing License year exam. By the way, I should introduce myself to those who don't know. I'm Northern Illinois Board Representative to the IHAR Valley Career Center. I'm on their school board. The ceremony was attended by students and staff, as well as family and friends. We'd like the fed girls who supported these students throughout the life of the program and making this achievement a celebration for all. On Thursday, May nineteenth, the Career Center hosted the candlelighting ceremony for part-time day adult education licensed practical nursing students. The candlelighting ceremony marks the completion of the basic nursing program for these students. The ceremony also marks a halfway point in the program, and they're celebrating the advent of Florence Lightengale. This Lightengale was the first nurse who started the first nursing program in the United States. The event was attended by, is attended by and celebrated with families. Not Miss Lightengale, it was the graduation of these students. Congratulations to the Career Center's power equipment technology instructor, Jerry Kenny, on being the Blaster Corporation and tomorrow's Tech twenty twenty-two Instructor of the Year. It's a national award. The Instructor of the Year program recognizes a teacher who takes an unconventional approach to education, works a little bit too hard, and most importantly, is committed to education, educating the best future technicians in the area. And finally, as we have no board reading scheduled for the month of July, our next regular board meeting will be on Thursday, August twenty-fifth, at six thirty at the Career Center. I think.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Good, 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 good table. Mr. Pidmore, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything.
Let's make it. All right, here we go. So legislative, um, not a whole lot going on in legislative room right now, um, there, in this sense at the moment. But last month, I reported that the State Board, um, Board's Performance and Impact Committee approved a resolution to increase the third grade reading guarantee promotion score from six eighty-three to six eighty-five, um, and for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So this resolution was now, has now been passed at the State Board of Education at their meeting in July. It is important to recognize that the state test scores passing numbers are an ever-moving target. This creates a level of inconsistency that public schools must continuously adapt and meet. Private schools are not required to give these tests and are not held accountable to that. Also, the State Board of Education approved a resolution to update the dyslexia guidebook as we go to approve the dyslexia law changes that have recently been enacted in House Bill five eighty-three, and also the implementation of the screening for that type they put off to a twenty-two, twenty-four school year. And that's all.
All right, then let's move into superintendent's recommendations. Item one, I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. A second.
These are board policies, one you're adopting tonight, the other three, um, it's a first reading, and I'll ask you to adopt them in August. The one you're adopting is the new class rank policy that Mr. Wright presented on some time ago that will eliminate class rank. It will not get rid of it completely. Students who need it will request to get it, but it would not be used, um, any longer. The other three, complaints about fellow employees, uniformed federal grant items, and inventory or disposition of equipment obtained with federal orders.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item two is recommendations to drop the administrative salary schedule effective August one, twenty twenty-two. The changes to this are, first, we added the new position, the new Director of Educational Services position to this, and also we are asking to move the Technology Director into the Other Directors column. He's had his own column, and we want to make him, um, at the same level as the Other Directors. There's no other changes to the salaries.
Any questions?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item three is recommendations to adopt revised administrative guidelines for administrative benefits effective August first.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. A second.
There are two changes here of note. One is, um, giving additional vacation for administrators to have been administrators in the district for more than five years. And the second is to increase the pay for those administrators who earn a PhD from two hundred and fifty dollars a year to seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item four is recommendations to approve a resolution establishing educational requirements for substitute teachers for the next two school years.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
A second.
This is an extension of something you've heard early in the year that will now be effective for the next two school years. It allows, uh, people with high school diplomas to, uh, substitute in grades eight through five, and those with at least two years of college to substitute in grade six through twelve. We're kind of torn on this because we think it does dilute the whole professionalism idea of being a teacher, but it's also a realistic response to the substitute teacher shortage going across the nation.
And the substitute for distractions is definitely a huge issue right now. I'm working, having a huge lack of response to, um, filling classes. Um, I can't begin to tell you how many articles I'm dealing with, places where they're looking at starting this year, it's severe deficits, and then you put substitutes on that list too, and it's, it's very challenging. And so I would like to see us eventually be able to move away from this particular kind of criteria, but right now it just feels like our hands are tied, we don't really have a choice. Um, it's important to have schools open every day, for kids to be in school every day, and make sure that, um, our community is in positive environment for these. Do you have any other things to add?
I just want to add that we're keeping up with the party often as well. It is legislation that's going across all states. So, um, hopefully this is just the intuitive resolution to, uh, grant student, and so we definitely want to make sure they can start school year with some plan to respond to ways in that people will be absent and forth.
Yes. Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item five is recommendations to approve authorization to employ several folks through the Summit Educational Service Center.
A motion.
Uh, the second group you see on these, these are tutors, um, many, or some hate for what they're titled on, some for general fund, but these are folks that are helping our students in reading, um, and those are tutors that we hire annually. The new position you see above is Adrian Russ. We talked about this for the last several months, about increasing the, um, the staffing in our technology department, our one-to-one initiative, um, that have really caused the, uh, technology department to be strapped. And so, uh, we have chosen Adrian Russ. No, um, no relation to Mike Ross, except the names different, one has one ass, one has two. So there's no neptunism, but I do see Adrian Russ, and we're going to graduate Adrian Russ in the bathroom. Congratulations, Adrian, welcome to the team.
Any questions?
No, I just want to add a footnote to, uh, Mr. Brown, for, uh, working, uh, I would, uh, uh, take out, uh, to find the funds to write the position, uh, possibly, something we can prove.
Okay, Mr. Curry?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item six is recommendations to approve contracts for the People's Services Department.
A motion.
A second.
And you can see, these are services for students with disabilities, audiology, hearing impaired, visually impaired, et cetera, that we purchase through the educational service of northeast Ohio.
Any questions?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Item seven is recommendations to approve our new substitute teacher rates.
A second.
Uh, this is something that many districts are doing, increasing substitute teacher rates again as an attempt to, um, increase the substitute, uh, fill rate. Currently, we pay a hundred dollars per day. We're asking to bring that up to a hundred and fifteen dollars a day, and then you can get bonuses for certain numbers of days served, et cetera. It's also the creation of a building sub, which would be a substitute teacher that would be assigned to the same building every day, nine out of ten days, so they don't qualify for benefits, but they would be available. It, it is an increase, but I'd like to remind everybody that whenever we don't have a sub, we've got to cover it with teachers by pulling them from their classes or from their planning time. And when we do that, we're paying the teacher at least thirty dollars an hour, and the rate here is about twenty, twenty dollars an hour. So it's a, it's a savings to the district for us to actually have substitute, as well as not a disruption to the educational environment for our new teachers.
I think it's also important to know that it's not just teachers who are getting pulled from their classes. It's administrators, it's school sites, it is, um, you know, counselors, it's everyone. And they are not, and they're busy, they're doing their jobs, and that is another layer that's not going to be taken care of. So, um, making sure that we have coverage, and hopefully this helps to attract people to come and help us educate our community of children, because we need the help, and every district around us does. Any other things to add?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Pidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Vodasch?
Yes.
Mr. Carey? Man, if anybody in the audience who are watching on TV would like to get our substitute teacher, but we just increased the pay, and we've got jobs for you, so if you need them. Uh, item eight is recommendations to approve the personnel of our system.
A motion.
Uh, several things to note here. First of all, you see the resignation of Matt Stickle. Matt going over to our, um, our neighbor to the east, Twinsburg, and wish him all the best and great workforce for the five years that he was here. Uh, new appointments, Casey Wright, Director of Business. We know Casey, fifteen years in the, in the district, high school associate principal, high school principal, ready to take on this role in the central office. He's way steep already and doing competitive work. And because, um, because this transition happened so late, we decided that, um, uh, we would probably not get the deepest pool of candidates to replace Casey on a full-time basis. So we're bringing, um, Luis Torrindo back as a winner, and Luis is no stranger to North Carolina. Uh, Luis retired as the Twinsburg High School Principal, but then has done two long-term sub jobs with us, one at Ledgeview and one for a full year at Lyden. So we're really blessed to have somebody with Luis's experience, um, and has known Casey. So we're really blessed to have somebody with Luis's experience, um, and has known Casey for years, get along really well. So we're, um, we're sure that this transition will go well. Uh, certified resignation, you see Gina Lee resigning, and then you see some new appointments. Um, this, I'm not going with because currently, right now, we have a fully staffed with teachers and you see these are the last, uh, group of teachers that are being hired. And you see Donovan Nichols is a normal resident that we're, uh, hiring over there at Leeden. You see some leave of absence, some long-term subs, extended school year and all those other typical kind of things this time of year.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Larnier?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Fidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodash?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry?
And that concludes my report. All right, moving into, uh, my report, I have a resolution to approve the consent items.
Can I get a motion?
A motion. One second.
Uh, these are typical items, uh, the approval of special needs, uh, from June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, as well as regular boarding units. As well as the financial statement. Just to sum up the year for you with our financial status. Um, if we ended the year with a net income of almost three million dollars, and that's relatively important because the last time the district ended the year with positive or net income is fifty or two thousand seventy, so it's been a few, five years if you have a particular important net income for the year. Uh, that's mainly attributed to two things. One is the MGM settlement that the board decided posted general fund as well as moving, uh, certain expenditures for guidance counselors and psychologists to our pension funding. Uh, so the personnel costs were not reported in the general fund this past year. Uh, but as that funding adds up, then it becomes a back end of the general fund. So those two, those two items are moving to our support of that net income. Uh, so, and, uh, looking at revenue side of things, we ended the year with fifty-six point two million dollars in revenue. When you compare that last year to fifty-one point seven million dollars, from eight point seven percent increase. Uh, I've touched on this in the past in a, a number of meetings, but the main difference is the MGM settlement that we reported we did not have that in the past, as posted this year in the general fund as well as significant increases in our restricted state grants and aid funding uh, due to the change in the funding for that funding. In the past, you're going to just do a balance funding as well as get the education. Uh, those were the sources that were reported and now they are. Um, so overall, we're showing an eight point seven percent increase in revenues. And then on the expenditure side, we ended the year with fifty-three point three million dollars in expenditures compared to last year of fifty-two point two million. That is an increase in expenditures of two point one percent. Uh, largest, two, two of the largest areas, uh, uh, known is our supply of materials. Talk, talk the, not even about this, but the fuel costs are the main driver of, of supplies and materials. Uh, we experienced a hundred and sixteen point eight percent increase in fuel costs of past year. One would be due to the increases in the cost of fuel, but also because we're comparing last year to this year. Last year we not had a full year of transportation, so the cost of fuel of last year compared to this year, we have a full year of transportation, which would drive that cost. So those two items that behind are driving that variance much higher than what we normally see. On the expenditure side, also, uh, a big ticket item that has a variance is our other non-operational. Uh, the reason why that is this year as opposed to last year is because the board decided to move seven hundred million dollars from the energy and the cost into the permanent group, uh, which obviously will be placed in twenty-one of this year. So what that looks like is that I say before, a net income for the year of just under three million dollars, two point nine million dollars. Our unencumbered, unreserved fund balance for the general fund at the end of this year is sixteen point seven million dollars compared to last year of thirteen point four million dollars. That concludes the financial update for June twenty-two.
Any questions?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Larnier?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Fidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodash?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry? Item number two is a resolution to approve the petty cash and change funds for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I recommend for approval.
A motion.
Oh, second.
Uh, this is an annual, uh, resolution that we do just to establish our petty cash amounts and our change funds for our school buildings, our athletic department, our cafeteria, because we can start this one year with the necessary funding operating.
Any questions?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Larnier?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Fidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodash?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry? And then finally, item number three is a resolution to determine the, to proceed with submitting the question of the issuance of school improvement files and the aggregate principal amount of one hundred and sixty-five million dollars to the electors of the school district pursuant to section one thirty-three point one eight of the revised vote. I recommend for approval.
A motion. One second.
What this is doing is this is, as we talked about in prior meetings, this is the final resolution for the process of putting the bond on the ballot. Um, with, with this vote, it will take, it will give me the authorization to take the final vote from these to the board of elections and file paperwork so that they can certify officially for the ballot in the event.
Uh, so I realize this is going to be, um, an interrupt for a few months because we're assuming the passage through the charter. Um, it's going to be a long battle for the community to be together. And I said, um, but I think I've shared with you the game together for a long time. Um, really took the time to talk with the community. And I, I think we have a really good shot officially through and I think this is a great thing for our community. The new buildings are, what's our youngest building is sixty years old or something like that?
Youngest is fifty-two.
Okay.
Cadres.
Yeah, the part of this town, it's about nineteen seasons or something. Uh, you know, it's time, our buildings are garbage, we need to be replaced. My children are going to use, um, uh, my, my youngest is a junior high school. Um, but I'm excited for this. I think this is a great thing for our community. Um, I, I think it's going to pull people together. I, I'm really, really excited to be a part of this push for the next few months and then build some new buildings.
I think the really important thing to notice in, in an excellent community for this is this is not a board decision. Um, there are steps that we've had to take to bring this to everyone, but this is a community decision. And the only way this community has to voice, uh, have our voice play out is at the ballot box. So this is the board of education, if this passes, this is the board of education asking the community, what do you choose? And this is a community decision and, um, it's one I can figure out. Um, I have one child that might get to be in this building, so, um, we, that will, um, but this is the investment in the community that we live in. Um, the efficiency that it will bring about, not just economically, but educationally, um, is substantial. And I think that our kids, um, in this community, once they're in here now, I mean, one better come in the future. I can't, I can't think of a better way, um, to, for other to, of the community to decide at this point for this vote. Um, every member from the steering committee tells me that better than the right thing. So, um, that's my decision.
I just want to add one, but I really appreciate the steering committee's work on, on all of their efforts. Um, for me, it's more of a timing issue. Um, I think as board members, we absolutely one hundred percent have a duty to be good financial stewards of taxpayer money. When four years ago, we got negative five percent inflationary costs on construction material and now they're at twenty percent, I don't see this as a good decision. We've heard, uh, several mentioned, uh, companies, Shore Williams, University Hospitals, those all profited during the COVID pandemic. We have not as a public institution. And so I would love to have the revenue trend related to some university hospitals. Unfortunately, we don't. And I also think it's important, highlight, we have a bond issue or a bond, excuse me, a current bond that's falling off. I believe within three years, um, is what our treasurer indicated. I think we need to wait for that one to expire and fall off. I think the market would potentially correct itself by that point. Um, and let's face it, financial struggles are real. Uh, folks that I've talked with in the community, I practice law in our community, talk with a lot of individuals in our community, and there's a lot of financial struggles. I would love to see taxes go down in six years. Since I've owned my home in Second Rock Hills, my taxes have gone up a thousand dollars in basically a year. Uh, each year it's about roughly a total of a thousand dollars or more. Um, the other big concern I get, Mr. Brown highlighted, that the district may be entering into deficit spending next year. And I think that that is more of a concern right now for this district, given that I would hate to see beautiful buildings built and then trouble running those facilities, transportation issues, uh, coming and going for those facilities as well. So I think we're not just at the appropriate time. Uh, another thing that give me greater joy, I have two young children, two and four, coming to be on our school district next year. I would love for her to have state-of-the-art facilities. Uh, but again, I believe we have a duty as board members to be good funding students, taxpayer money. Thank you.
So with respect to the board's comment, I'll say this, I agree with you that we have duty. And I think that duty has been satisfied as doing the due diligence to make sure that we get all of the numbers we need presented for the community. And I think the community is going to tell us whether or not it's signed. And I think our job as a governing body is to make sure that the plan is together, we present it to the community and then we hear from the community. So I think we'll know very clearly whether or not it's the right time or not. But I think our role is to make sure that we put the ducks on the road and we present it to the community and let, let's hear from them and let's decide then. Uh, because that's the thing about community and the great good, a lot of times you have to make decisions for the masses and necessarily for the small population of those who are dissenting. Uh, I, I would feel as a homeowner, I don't think anybody in here gets fuzzy on the inside and you start talking about the potential of our mortgage is increasing, uh, every month. But the, the reality is, uh, I think one of our children may be able to benefit from this. Uh, other probably graduating at the time when all this is going down. But I, I do believe that when you say duty, we've done that duty by, uh, having the steering committees come together to, uh, talk about the plan, talk about the vision, what it would look like. And now let's put it on the ballot and let's see what the community says and they will, you know, they can see by now. That's my, 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 my.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Larnier?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Fidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodash?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry? Four to one. And that concludes my report.
We have come to that point where we are ready to adjourn. Our next regular certification comes, hopefully comes on Monday, August twenty-ninth, twenty-two, at seven P M. And we're about to do a history of the year.
And if I could interrupt for just a second, that will be the board meeting that we invite all our new teachers and they'll be introduced. We'll have cookies. It will be a wonderful night.
Another step to normal, I've done that in two years, so, yay. Um, so with that, I have no questions.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Larnier?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Fidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodash?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry?